Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Joe Segura, Jr.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first on our agenda, we have a presentation of possible action by motion on the appointment of Ruth Nelson and Ruth Wickham to the senior advisory board. Mr. Miller?
Morning, Mayor and Council. Senior advisory boards had a vacancy for some time, but we've also had a recent departure and a member of the board that cannot continue, so we're making a recommendation to council that both Ruth Nelson and Ruth Wickham be appointed to the senior senior advisory board.
Any questions, comments from council? I'd just entertain action.
At this moment, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mrs. Ruth Nichols and Ruth Nelson to the senior advisory board.
Second.
I have a motion by Joe Segura and a second by Christine Casto. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carries. Thanks, Josh. Next, we have an update on our comprehensive plan. Mr. Curtis, Ms. Gondek.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll turn it over to Christina with Logan Simpson, and she'll just give you an update of where we're at on the complaint.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Good to see you this morning. A brief presentation for you this morning, just to update you where the draft plan is that got released earlier this month. So we'll just review the highlights by chapter and some of the key changes from the last plan that was done in 2010 and sort of how we got to this process. First of all, just sort of an overview of the plan is made up of three chapters. Our story, which provides a background of what the trends are, existing conditions here in Fort Morgan. Our policies is goals and the land use framework. And then our action is looking at strategies and how we're going to implement this plan moving forward. Throughout this planning process that started about a year, no, I'm sorry, about nine months ago, we've had four public meetings, focus groups, multiple conversations with stakeholders throughout the community, and that resulted in a final draft plan open house on Thursday at the concerts, which we had a good turnout, where we heard some good feedback, and we'll hope to provide people to encourage online participation and comments on the draft plan. We'll talk more about the comment process towards the end. Starting at the beginning, you know, we started with stakeholder interviews, interviewing many of you on the council, as well as key members of the community, and going out to Christmas Capitol Plains and hearing what people really value about this community, so we can set that vision moving forward that the goals and policies are based on. In chapter one, you'll see highlights of the snapshots, which is the existing conditions and trends. The full snapshots, I think you saw a couple of months ago, is provided in the appendix. You can really see the data behind all of those trends. In this chapter, we've also summarized what we've heard from the public on what their desires and needs for the future of Fort Morgan. In chapter two, we focused on updating the 2010 goals, and so this is a big, not a big change, but a significant change that was based on input from the public, as well as the technical advisory committee. So we took the goals from the 2010 plan and did a plan audit, said, what do we want to keep, drop, or what needs to be, you know, moved forward, but refined a little bit. So that's the basis of the goals in this plan for 2016. And as you probably recall, it's organized into these seven. And the second part of chapter two is really a lot of the meat in this plan. It takes the future land use categories, which are similar to the 2010 plan. We've consolidated such ones like urban, rural, and our agriculture, and the industrial and business park were separate. There is also this new mixed-use category, which is similar to what the downtown businesses allowing for a diversification of uses within the same area. So generally, the desired uses are the same as what was in previous plans. And for example, you'll see in this plan, and this might be a focus of your comments and review, is, you know, what are the desired uses and locations and characteristics of all of these? So it's just an example, but we have this for each of those future land use categories. So explaining what zoning districts are allowed within that future land use. So future land use is more broad, and then you drill down into the zoning, which is under that. So you can see some desired uses, locations, and characteristics of this mixed use for each of these land use frameworks. So when a new development proposal comes to Planning Commission, they'll say, you know, it meets, it's, you know, I'm proposing an office, you know, okay, check. Like, that's how the plan, this document will be used. And then further, you know, desired characteristics, hopefully that project is, you know, walkable and has sort of gathering spaces, so that it can be used as a guide for future development. This is the future land use map. Generally, it follows the 2010 plan. Major changes include reduction of the urban growth boundary, which is that orange line, from T and a half down to just including, you know, the top of Riverside Park all the way across. But the other boundaries from Q and the east-west boundaries are the same. Generally, this follows the intent of the 2010 plan with those changes in types of land uses and some differences, or mixed use, you know, that sort of takes future or previous business corridors and things like that, and makes it more of a business category. And in sort of that northeast quadrant was a proposed business park in 2010, sort of future land use, and now it's more of a residential and mixed use, primarily because of the constraints of accessing that land. Those are the main differences for that. But generally, you'll see which categories are proposed for which areas throughout this plan. And the urban growth boundary leads me to how we're going to implement this plan. One of these ways to implement this plan is through growth management. And this will be divided into a two-tiered approach. Within that growth boundary, we are working with the county to come up with an intergovernmental agreement to propose any development within that future, or within the urban growth boundary, follows a set of development standards that are more typical to the city, focusing urban growth within the city and not outside of the city. So the county stays its rural nature, that's the, you know, desire of farm-to-market, protecting those farm-to-market routes, but keeping urban services and development within the city limits. So that's actually the second tier that we'll be working through with the county. And the first tier is just a general sort of recommendations. You know, you refer to me, I refer to you, how we should develop, and sort of just a sign-off for recommendations. The county wouldn't have to abide by anything the city would say, but it would, within this three-mile area, generally, it's just, you know, hey, heads up, this is what we're doing. But the growth boundary, within the growth boundary is where, you know, annexations would be focused, common street standards would be focused, those types of things, so that we have a consistent growth pattern that is predictable in the future. Another part of the implementation of the comprehensive plan is the strategies that are divided up into three categories. So we've identified some projects that may need more planning, more studies done, or things that just we know we need to do that can be built based on, you know, capital improvement projects, planning. So those are projects. And then different types of regulations that may be implemented because of this plan that will guide growth in the future. You'll see, and this is a little hard to read, but it's in the packet, I'll just highlight some of the key points on each of these implementation strategies. So you'll see a list of strategies in the plan. You'll also see this quadrant, and we've ranked these strategies based on the relative effectiveness, how we think though, guide growth in the future. And you'll see, most of them are above, you know, we had them kind of ranked on like a one to five scale, so most of them are above the 50%. So, pretty effective, but maybe we need to readjust how those are plotted on the graph. But, and then on the east-west axis, or the bottom axis, you'll see relative cost. And this could be, you know, cost for staffing, you know, physical improvement, cost, capital cost, those types of things, all taken into consideration. So when you plot it on this quadrant, the top two quadrants would be something that's more short-term, because it's highly effective, and it's not going to, it may cost less. And then the second, the bottom two quadrants are, you know, a little bit maybe we put in the five-to-10-year plan. So here in plans or studies, we've come up with some things like housing market study, a target industrial industry study to market, to future businesses potentially, and looking at parks and recreation and utilities, you know, planning master plans for those in the future. The second group of strategies is different projects that should be built, such that, or something that can be done right now, such as marketing, you know, the disc golf course as a regional asset to really attract people to come here. It's something that has already been highlighted as an asset to this community. Biking, you know, identifying preferred routes for biking, so that people, not necessarily building anything, but just, you know, creating a map, those types of things, to help people get around, because that's something we heard in the community. And also, maybe utility-expanding, you know, fiber optic system, which is something that's already in the pipeline. The third category of implementation is regulatory changes. So this is going to be looking at your sign code, investigating different types of code changes that will be based on the comprehensive plan and recommendations that we heard in the plan, as well as, you know, rezoning specific areas to allow for senior housing, or something like that. So, next steps, we gave a Planning Commission update last Tuesday. They've had about two weeks to review this plan, and so they'll be providing comments, well, they should have provided comments by yesterday. And then we'll be looking for any commission, or any council comments this upcoming week. I know you guys are all headed up to hang out in Vail, but if you guys had a chance to review the plan, or if you have any comments tonight, I appreciate it. And then the next steps will be going to adoption in July. Any questions, comments?
I would say, from what I've reviewed of it, and I think you're on the right course, it looks pretty good. I'm sure we'll have some comments and that coming from council, and hopefully the public. I did a radio show yesterday and pushed it for public comments, so.
Great. Yeah, when we're asking for comments, there's different ways to comment, and you can comment online. We have a survey set up to do that. We're asking for public comments by June 30th, and just to kind of focus our review.
Okay. Does council have any comments, or that regarding it? Looks good. I'm pleased with it. I think we're already developing or in process of some of what's in there. So I think we're on track and in good shape. We have an awesome staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on an application for the preliminary plat of a 55 single-family lots at the Veridian subdivision. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before council. Each speaker will be limited to a comment time of three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment to, that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony to the questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of people that have signed up to testify. First, the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has the hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing was published in the Fort Morgan Times on June 2nd.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation of the application. Mr. Curtis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is a preliminary plat for a major subdivision. This application is in consideration, particularly looking at phase one, which is in your packet and shown on the presentation, to be subdivided into 55 single-family lots, along with the applicable rights-of-way establishment of easements as through the major subdivision process. This parcel is located along, on the east side of West Street and north of Q, and the east side is Main Street, and the middle school's to the north. The applicant, last year, had purchased the property and annexed it into the city of Fort Morgan, and had it rezoned as R2, which does allow for single-family and two-family homes as a use by right. Currently, they have already gone through the sketch plan, which is original sketch plan that had been reviewed, had proposed just over 300 lots. They're at the preliminary plat stage. Ultimate development is just going to be over 150 lots. Through staff's review, the preliminary plat is in general compliance with the city's land use and subdivision regulations. What you'll notice, in this layout, it is a little bit different in that it's lacking in alleys, but it's not unique in Fort Morgan. As we know, over in the southeast end of town, there are areas without alleys. The major difference that we're doing within this, through Brent and the utility directors' review, as well as other staff, the proposal is to have all the utilities within the street within the right-of-way. So that would include your gas, electric, water, sewer, and applicable storm drainage. Additionally, sanitation, with their new equipment that they've received over the years, the functionality of either being able to use rollouts or dumpsters is, there's not really much of a change versus years ago. Rollouts were kind of a little bit harder to maintain. So this would follow local street standards, which is 60-foot right-of-way, which would have a 37-foot paved road with sidewalks, and then potentially, which will come up in future, find details of whether they put a utility easement behind the sidewalk for some of those that are more boring work, like the, not boring, boring, but gas, and electric, and fiber, so that they're not always tearing up the street. Rather, they would go through Softscape instead. As you'll know, even though this is 55 lots, intended build-out of this would be done in blocks, which isn't identified at this point, and it's going to be based off of the market. So their intent is not to build out all the roads and infrastructure initially, that they're going to break it out in blocks, which is again recommended by code, where they would have like 11 to 15 lots readily available to build on. So they would only build the applicable streets and infrastructure until those lots have been built or purchased, so that then they can move on to the next phase. We do like that approach. We've seen other areas where there's a lot of infrastructure in place in town on some other subdivisions, and there's really nothing there, and the infrastructure tends to fail over time. So this planning is recommended. Additionally, in working with the fire marshal, we typically like two points of access. As you'll notice, on this plan, in the phase one, they would be accessing West Street. And you'll see that there's also connection that proposes either to extend Education Avenue. Right now, it stops with a temporary cul-de-sac just past the middle school parking. Right now, the cul-de-sac is right here, which would require further build-out of this road, or go directly up. As we had plotted their property, there is right-of-way that would go directly up to Akoma. The applicant has lended to, you know, obviously, the concerns of cut-through traffic and those kind of items, but that hasn't been fully vetted out yet, and we don't feel that that access is needed in the first block, or the first couple of blocks of the development. So probably until we get past half of those lots built out, we wouldn't be looking at the secondary connection. Again, working with the fire marshal, and with Brent, to make sure we have proper looping for utilities and those kind of items. The bigger plan, even though they've got it laid out, it is, it could change. They're just kind of, this is their intention. The drainage for this, as far as retention ponds would go into this area down here, so most of the drainage would work its way into this area. And at this point, based off of some of those preliminary conversations with the county, they currently aren't proposing an access off of Q. The county had had some concerns about that. But again, as far as this application is concerned, we're really only looking at this first phase. The rest is just kind of giving you that bigger view. But such time, if the market changes, they still could come in. When they go through the preliminary plat and final plat, they may change that design altogether. But they did a lot of work, which we appreciate it, looking at how that whole network would fall into place. In your packet, I won't go through all the different items. We have dozens of items that we analyze and look at that are required. They've provided us preliminary drainage reports, preliminary traffic studies. There was an amendment, again, in their original sketch plan, they were proposing over 300 lots. And then they've, in this, with their next, in the preliminary, is all these phases built out when they have 150-plus. That's almost a reduction in traffic in half. But again, based off of this layout, those studies and through staff's review doesn't pose a significant issue as far as leaving residential neighborhoods. As most know, either leave in the morning and come back at night, there's not a whole lot of through, and that's how most of those traffic study works, looking at peak AM times, which is generally between 7:00 and 9:00, and then the PM, which is usually 4:00 to 6:00. And that's what you look at to handle the worst-case scenarios. As far as staff comments, in your packet, we did provide you the questions that staff did have related to their application. Most of those comments have been addressed in the packet that you see today. So they turned it around in like a week on the comments we had. A lot of the issues, I think, were some of the road naming, the roads that they show now don't conflict with other roads in the city. Before, they had some other tree names, like some extra maples and walnuts, which we didn't want to get confused with the ones that already exist. Right now, the only one that's a similar street would be Duel, because Duel would be the one that would continue up as it connects to Akoma and that right-of-way. So that's the one that they do show on that layout. We took this to, and again, all the regulations and standards have been generally followed, as well as the subdivision design standards. Staff would be requesting council's approval tonight, based off of just addressing staff's comments, to be able to move forward with the final plat. The final plat, that's where they're going to have to have all the construction documents and the details of every little element that, once that would be approved, they can go and start their construction. That will also show the blocks that are built within those phases, within that phase. This was presented to Planning Commission last week as well, and they didn't have any significant concerns. And I guess at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So they'll be flowing to a forest main after they get all of the other future build-outs or future phases?
They would what?
They'll be, have, will have a lift station down there, is that correct?
Yeah, the proposal for the sanitary sewer.
But they won't need this for this first build-out phase?
I think that's what we're kind of looking on the details of how far we're taking some of these items, so. So the preliminary looked at this analysis, the lift station, I believe, is down here. I don't think in that first phase they would, but that's when we get into understanding how the blocks would lay out, where we may have to be doing some looping for water or fire. There may have to be an extra hydrant that's added, depending on how they phase this. There's been some of the discussions of maybe one of the lots, it's used as a temporary secondary emergency access, such as this location, this is where the existing cul-de-sac is, but should they contemplate building here? You could have this access, and then this could be a temporary access road to get into two points. The fire department's main concern is they want to have, and PD and those, is they want to have availability adjacent to a lot, to a paved road. So again, if they were just going to build here, you know, in one piece here, they can get to it from west or this proposed street. So that's why the overall concept, we'll make sure that we can move forward. And then I know that's where Brent will get into the details on the constructability, depending on how we do those blocks. But as applicant that's here tonight, will land, it's going to go back to the market. So if they sell up those 12 to 15 lots right-of-way, they're going to probably turn around and just keep going. And so I think we want to be able to get them started in some of those areas, as is in the middle school. We don't like to have dead-end roads. It hurts with the circulation, but that's what we'll look, even if there's some of them are temporary access. But the biggest concern, that we haven't really got into that detail, is what all has to get put in now, even putting in the full detention pond. Right now, so far away, doesn't, we agree, doesn't make a whole lot of sense versus kind of starting out with an interim right here, and then as it builds out, then get more and more formal on the bigger, bigger system. But they'll be using material as they need, so without having to disturb the whole site, just sitting out there. So that's why they looked at the master planning, so we can figure out where the best high ends are going to be. So it's going to go back to the water usage. I think this one's also proposing a second, a non-coattable source to, through this system. It wasn't represented in here, but they'll all interconnect when we get to that final plat stage, so.
Very good. I think at one point in the packet, it mentioned that in phase one would not incorporate parks, something or other.
That's right.
Is, I guess I don't know the rules in regards to that. Will they have to, by the end, provide some park grounds, and where will that be, and what will that look like?
Mm-hmm. From the subdivision as a whole, in our code, park space is typically required with large developments. There are cases where they don't seem to maybe be practical, and that's kind of a case-by-case. Right now, in their plan, not going to put it in this first build-out, but it would be proposed. There's drainage. I believe the park would be proposed in this general vicinity, which would be kind of centralized to the subdivision as a build-out as a whole. So it is still a contemplated that would be required in the subdivision, but their request is not to do it in phase one. Let's Let's get some lots and homes in there built first and then has more come in there than to propose a park. So the fundamentals of what they're putting in for amenities to that haven't really been discussed, other than the allocation of space that would have to be provided on this site. And actually, most of the drainage they have, which we like to, there's not a whole lot of pipe system. A lot of it's going to be through street drainage. There's only a few inlets on this main dual-street corridor that's being proposed, again, that would discharge down into this area. So we like that again because that requires street sweeping and not necessarily storm pipe replacement down the road and those kind of things. So we like the fact that we can deal with it with the sheet flows and it meets into the general standards.
So everything will flow to the retention pond instead of tying into our sanitary or storm sewer?
Yeah, so right now, the way they've had this in the, in the larger development, it all stays on-site. And so that actually meets, that actually meets general requirements as far as any development's concerned, that you don't increase runoff to, to existing roads and streets. So most of their drainage, there's some small spots that'll contribute over here, but for the most part, a lot of this is going to contribute into these retention pond areas, which we have similar to the city. So we won't be putting this into another city system. Now, what may occur as we get down the road in future phases, it kind of goes back to who's going to own, own the ponds. We have that in other areas, there's some that the city own and we manage. There's other ones such as CRHDC, one pond the city does and the other one CRHDC does. But again, it depends on what kind of aesthetics they want. They want them really beautiful and mowed all the time and stuff like that. Typically, you see property owners just maintaining them. But most subdivisions that you see, usually until the full build-out, then those become the discussions down the road that the city may take them over, depending on the functionality, which is very common in the front range. But usually, they wait until that development's done before those are taken over. And they're created as their own outlot, so it doesn't affect taxes and those kind of things because it doesn't really have that great value because there's not a lot of use to it, so. The one for Salute's a good example. Salute managed that little one by Linda until everything else developed out, and now we manage it. So that one's turned over to us. So we include those in our budget, which we generally try and clean them out in the spring and then later in the fall. So it's not something that we go and do really on a regular basis, especially the retention ponds.
So we have temporary dead ends in the water system or water lines to that while, while they're building out?
And that's what we've got to look at. We want to probably minimize those, but that's where we'll work upon this point of, that'll help them try and understand where the 11 lots are, the 15 lots that they want to build, that we don't have a lot of those dead ends. And that's why those blocks aren't shown here because that'll be looking into it to minimize those, those dead-end runs. But they occur and that's where sometimes it just becomes, as I mentioned, an extra hydrant that acts as a blow-off in the short term and then you leave it as you expand. But we don't want to have major dead ends, but that'll be that constructibility that would come in that final plat stage that we would actually show. This block kind of is intending this infrastructure, this block. So that way, as they build, we don't have to keep coming back.
Kind of hard to avoid it.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Would the park area that you were discussing, would that become a city-managed park area? Would that be part of the development?
And probably, we haven't got to that. I think, you know, if they want to manage it, again, and the applicant can speak to this, right now, they're, they're open to, when we presented it, Planning Commission, they're open to either custom builders or spec homes. And so they've left it, they're just not looking for necessarily one large company to take them. So I think that flexibility, I think that'll go, I think that's probably what they're waiting for. But I'll let him to speak on that behalf, depending on how they develop this. Sometimes when you end up with those HOAs, sometimes they're good and bad. You know, they have their pros and cons. And so that'll probably be those discussions. And then that'll go further with, with Mr. Miller as far as the best use for that, that property and how it should be managed, so.
Anybody else have questions or comments for Mr. Curtis at this time? Thanks, Brad.
Yep.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. Does Cap, you wish to speak to counsel?
Mr. Mayor, Representative Counsel, my name is Peter Martz. And I'm the project manager. I think Brad's covered pretty much everything. Two quick items, one on the question on the forest main issue. That's really one, as Brad mentioned, that's really one of grade differential and whether there's adequate fill, which you don't think that there is to balance a site. The, the Phase One area that we have identified will gravity into the sewer. It'll actually go to the north, to the northeast corner of the, of the phase, which will go up into, that connect into the sewer main, which now is just east of the school site. So the 55 lots will, will gravity into that system. We have, we've, we've studied the, the potential and the possibility of a lift station because geographically, this site, as you probably are aware, first of all, it's quite flat, but any grade that there is, it goes from the northwest to the southeast. That's why we have on this drawing, that's why we're showing the detention pond. So in order to accommodate that, without having to bring in literally hundreds of thousands of yards of fill, we're anticipating the possibility or the potential, I should say, of a, of a lift station. It'd be a small, I'll say, a package plant typically for, you know, 100, 150 units. It would be a small package plant that would then possibly have some headworks and it would be a small diameter forest main. Everything outside of Phase One would flow into that lift station, into a wet well, and then it would be pumped back up north into the other gravity system that's already existed from Phase One. So I'll open up, any questions you have for me?
Anybody have any questions for him? I think Brad answered most of the ones I had, so. You're off the hook at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak or seeing none? Mr. Brennan, have we received any written or oral comments for your office?
Not through my office, Your Honor.
Can I add to that, Mayor? In your packet, you'll notice that we did receive one comment from Morgan Ditch Company. It was basically just voicing, it's in your packet as far as how it spelled out their concerns. The ditch isn't impacted by this initial 55 lots in this first phase, but the applicant is aware, I think they've kind of worked out, I know the applicant doesn't necessarily want chain link fence adjacent to lots, but they're, the lots currently aren't even proposed within their 150-foot easement. But that was the only application that we had received a week or so ago.
Okay, I did notice that in our packet. Counsel have any comments? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion by Christine Casto and a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Counsel action, Mr. Myers.
So Brad put out in the packet, under the analysis portion, what to look for. Basically, it's got 12 different parts, as I recall. If, if counsel feels that the preliminary plat has met those, recommend approval. If you feel that there's something that needs to be clarified, you can make some sort of conditional approval. I don't know, Brad, if this was still needing a conditional approval or if all the comments have been made.
I think the conditional that they continue to work on the clarifications and responses with staff as they develop the final plat is all we request.
Certainly so.
And also the final plat items anyway, so.
And then if you feel that it doesn't meet the requirements set forth in the analysis, which is straight out of the code, then you would deny the final, or the preliminary
I would entertain action by resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution for conditional approval of case number 14-018SD, preliminary plat for a major subdivision for Fort Morgan Farms LLC III, AKA Veridian, to subdivide 102.8 acres into lots, right-of-ways, and the establishment of easements through the major subdivision process with the condition of clarifications or responses to the applicable items identified in the staff preliminary plat review.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on the request for rezoning of a property known as Silver Spur Campground. Once again, this is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before the counsel. Each speaker will be limited to comment time of three minutes unless a speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time will be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under the guidelines and otherwise, or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony, questioning, that is, testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it is necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the legal notice, Mr. Brennan. Has it been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing also appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 2nd.
Next is presentation by Mr. Curtis, once again.
Thank you. The summary of this, this is a rezoning request for the Silver Spur Campground. The applicant desires to allow for additional RV camping spots. There was an existing home on that property that was recently removed, and he's seeking to expand the operations of that campground. The issue at hand is currently that property is zoned UA or urban agriculture, which essentially does not allow for this type of use. As such, he's requesting to rezone it as R4, which falls under the general parameters and guidelines of mobile home residential. Subject to this rezoning, he would also want to do some upgrades to the property, but that's not really applicable to the case tonight. We did take it to Planning Commission, and at its June 13th, it was a meeting, not a hearing per code process, but they did recommend approval of the rezoning after review of this case. Through the analysis, this is a privately initiated rezoning, and the applicant generally conformed with the requirements that we requested through our review. There are four items that are criteria for rezoning. One is that the land use proposed for rezoning has changed or is changing to a degree that's in the public interest and consistent with the intent to encourage different densities or uses. The county assessor's records in our research show that this property's been used predominantly as a trailer and RV park even prior to it being annexed into the city. This rezoning is to allow the property owner to, to have the ability to bring this site into code compliance, to allow him to further develop, maintain, and operate this business. Number two, the proposed rezoning is needed to provide land that's demonstrated community need or service. In both the 2003 and 2010 comp plan, as we know, there is a shortage of housing in the area. Conditions haven't approved. Even though this is for long-term housing, it does provide options for temporary recreational uses for people coming through. Number three, the existing zoning classification currently recorded is an error. It's not an error. It was just brought in with the major south plat annexation that essentially went from Main Street all the way over to Barlow, up to the center of the river. It was all included in that. The proposed, also the proposed rezoning is in conformance or will bring the property into conformance with the comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies. In the 2010 comp plan, it does not specifically address this particular zoning. And the comp plan, it shows for the most part, other than the existing uses, a lot of this area is generally preserved for open space and parks. However, being to the relationship of this, as you can see in the exhibit, just to the south with restaurant and hotels, there are business uses in that general area. So this is inadequate, in staff's opinion, rezoning without a significant transition. They're also required to burden of proof, again, they provided us in the, in the application of what their request is to do. We've provided information in your packet, including the applicant's, also looking at in our code how staff has felt R4 is the best use, even though it specifically addresses mobile home residential in the title. They follow the same intent as far as kind of mobile, but just in different functionalities, and it's a little bit higher density. Also in your packet, there is a distinct difference in how mobile homes as, parks as well as travel trailer parks operate. And this is what the applicant is seeking to move forward towards, subject to the rezoning, is to bring this travel trailer park into compliance with the code, such as the appropriate business licensing, working with staff so that there can be utility upgrades as needed. And so we provided that for reference as far as documentation that would still be required after, should the rezoning be, be approved, they wouldn't be able to immediately go and just do what they wanted. They would just have to, it allows them to bring things in to what's stated in our code in Chapter Five under business licenses. With this documentation, staff finds that all the applicable requirements have been met and recommends city council approve this case to rezone from urban ag to R4. By approving the rezoning, the property may then be altered, improved, and operated within compliance and the regulations of the city's municipal code and the adopted building codes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So the intent is to have this continue to be a travel trailer-type park? This is intended to become a permanent mobile home park?
No. That's intent. Now, if you rezoned it to R4, mobile home parks are a use by right. So if he wanted to level it and change the whole design, he would still go through the appropriate, you know, site plan process and planning and zoning, but that would be that allowable use as it falls under R4. So that's why I provided in the packet, even with the R4, it still gives them the right to, or if he sells it, there's still certain things that they could do within a right, even though right now his intent is to just continue to expand on that. But it does open up that flexibility to potentially allow those other uses that are in there, which are very minimal.
Perfect, thank you.
Utilities, is there anything needing or?
Not as far as needing's concerned. Again, working with Brent, the current system right now operates a little bit different than what the code has. The code, as it states, for operating a travel trailer park is intended to have a central bath house facility, and you can't connect sewer individually to, to the trailer spaces. However, that system's already in place, and I know Brent's looking at that. And so those will think, those will be things that would come down later, that if, if the applicant desires to keep it, there may be a variance request or something that would be a little bit different, or if he disconnects. he disconnects it. But those things we are looking at. The site does currently operate off of a well. Again, following our general water regulations, I believe, once it fails, then he would have to tie into the city water system. And then there's already electric up there. Again, the way that system works, I know there's, the way it's set up with the metering, I know there's a desire, even by the electric department, excuse me, to kind of consolidate how we're operating that electrical system, which currently, right now, can't do because it's not rezoned properly.
So I think it says that they want to add eight additional RV camping spots. How many are currently there?
I believe it's...
Nineteen.
Yeah, there's 19 right now. Again, that's just what he put in the application. Can't really hold him to it unless you want to do a condition of the rezoning, but that was just kind of intent, what his desire is. But he can add, as long as it meets that intent of the code, as is necessary. But again, to even just add one more trailer right now, he can't do because the grandfathering goes away, because we'd have to look at the current building codes, services, floodplain regulations that are now in effect, to make sure all those things come into play, so we wouldn't even be able to issue a permit. And that's why he's kind of at that standstill, that he can't do anything beyond that grandfathered 19 lots that are sitting there.
That kind of lends itself to another question, I guess. So in so much as, clearly during the flood, that became a part of the river, is there concerns? I guess maybe they're not our concerns. So once we rezone this to an R4, is there things in the code that would require, before that became a permanent mobile home park potentially, that there'd have to be things put in to make sure?
Yeah, as far as any development or expansion, it is in our building codes. When we talk about the 2013 flood, those were the things, there were portions of that area that did have to get redone because some of the meters and stuff were inundated with water, but other portions weren't. And so, again, I think that's part of the desire of upgrading the electrical system to get some of those things that may have been below that floodplain. I know when the new ones got put in, the requirement was to take it out, but we have to review that. So again, that's in here. It's also in our building codes, and it's also in the section dealing with floodplain, that that's when those new trailer parks, as he will have to have a layout as part of the requirements, and we'll just have to verify that where those things are being placed, that it meets those requirements to be out of the plain, or be floodproofed in a way that meets the insurance requirements and FEMA requirements.
Perfect.
If we have any comments or questions for Mr. Curtis? Okay. Thanks, Brad.
Yep.
Next, we can hear comments from the applicant, if any. Does the applicant wish to address council?
I don't have any.
Okay. Is there any public comments? Is there anybody in the audience wishes to speak to this issue? Is there comments or by council? Was there any comments, oral or written, Mr. Brennan?
None through my office, your honor.
Seeing none. Thing else, I would entertain motion to close the public hearing.
Your honor, I offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Christine Casto, a second by Dan Marler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Council action, Mr. Myers.
So as Brad mentioned, the criteria for rezoning are laid out in his memo, four different criteria to look at. If council determines, based on the information that's been provided, that this application meets those requirements, then you should approve. If you feel that it does not meet the requirements, you can deny. If you feel that there's some issues that need to be resolved still, you can add conditions.
Okay. I would entertain action.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution approving case number 16-006ZO, a rezoning from UA, urban agriculture, to R4, mobile home residential.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, and hope you all have a safe trip this week.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Green. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a request for in-kind services and fee waivers for the Morgan County Fair. Mr. Miller.
Good morning again. In your package should be a memo, but as is typical on an annual basis, Morgan County requests use of our picnic tables for the annual county fair. New to the request this year is a request to use the Showmobile. So staff doesn't have any issue sending that to the fair. They're having a concert this year. They're at the fair and requesting use of that, so that's the only real change from years past. So dollar amount's broken out there, and any questions? Let me know.
So the only difference is the Showmobile?
Yeah, that's the only real addition. If you recall, I believe it was two years ago, a little bit oversight on our staff's part, but we were only charging them sort of a day's use, and the way the fee structure breaks down, they charge on the picnic tables, so that really is what makes the fees above and beyond what we can improve internally.
And your staff does all the delivering and picking up the?
For this event, yes. It's not a practice of ours, but the scale of the event and our support, we can make that happen.
Isn't it stated in here that the county will pick up the picnic tables?
And they might, and they have, but we are required with the Showmobile, that's not an issue that...
Right.
We let anybody touch that. We will have our staff on hand, and yeah. But it's not our practice that we deliver picnic tables. There are a couple of exceptions that we make in counties' law.
Okay. Any questions or comments additional?
I have a question about, we seem to be waiving their deposits on things. Well, a deposit is something that you put down so that if they return it in good faith or nothing is broken or whatnot, they then would receive that back. So why are we waiving that?
Generally, we don't. Generally, we don't. They've made that request, various organizations have made that request in the past, and we haven't always, I guess, allowed that to happen. And I guess if that's kind of the perspective of council, that we kind of need to have that money there. We don't have to waive that portion, and they can give us the money, and we'll give it back if everything comes back in good condition.
And that was just my concern, that, you know, we put a deposit down, and if something comes back broken or not in good shape, our parks guys have to clean the place from top to bottom, whatever the case may be, then how do we get our money back from them?
It's easier to keep the deposit.
Yeah.
So I guess the request is, we can modify that and everything but the deposit, and it would be just, and I don't think they'll have a problem, most places don't have a problem, just making the deposit and getting their money back.
Well, it says in the letter we got from Jody Meyer, it says, "If this is approved, I can send you a security deposit to hold for the Showmobile." Invoice on the security deposit, and then turn it into our accounting. So it doesn't stipulate the picnic tables, but it is on the Showmobile.
I think that makes, I mean, I think from a policy standpoint, I think that does make sense. I mean, we kind of, and not necessarily the county in particular, but just especially if we're using them for other events where...
I think they need to be collected and then returned.
Somebody agree? With that, I would entertain action by resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the, let's see, accepting the in-kind service fees excluding the Showmobile deposit. Second.
I have a resolution by Christine Casto, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation and possible action for bids on a gas system master plan. Mr. Nation?
That's not Tony.
Good morning, mayor and council. Going to wrap a couple of things up that we've discussed this morning into this presentation. As we've gone through the comprehensive plan, we've talked about the need for master planning and some of the plan aspects of what we do, especially from the utility side of it. A lot of the work that we do on the water and sewer side, we're still utilizing our older master plans that we had from, I think McLaughlin was their name back then. But in talking with Tony and the gas department, we don't have a real good master plan that we're still falling back upon for some of our development that we have coming up. So when we have a 150-plus lot subdivision coming onto the boundaries of our town, we are relying a lot upon just our staff and some of our discussions, informal discussions that we're having with our consultants. I felt it was important when talking with Tony last year, when we were setting some budgetary goals and everything, that we needed to go ahead and start to put in place a good master plan within the gas department. And so we kind of feel that we're now far enough along in the comprehensive plan process that we can go ahead and get our consultant aboard and move forward with a master plan with our natural gas division. And so we went out to bid on that. We actually received two companies that came back. One of them is our current consultant that we use for all of our rate consulting, but they also do master planning and stuff. That's McFadden Consulting Group. Then we also received one from Hawker Consulting. As you can see in the memo, the McFadden one was a little over $36,000, and Hawker was a little over $55,000. And so at this point, we would like council approval to go ahead and accept the proposal from McFadden Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $36,006 to work on the gas master plan.
When was the last master plan done?
It's been a while, when I talk to Tony about how old it was.
It was either Ron Harps or Bob Weimer was there then, so.
And we will be moving forward in the next couple of years, probably, with master plans and the other utilities too, but this was the one that I felt we needed to move on next and get underway.
Does anybody have any questions, or Mr. Nation?
Any idea why it's almost $20,000 difference?
Looking at their proposals, Hawker had a lot more hours incorporated into the request, and we have a feeling that has a lot to do with it, that they don't have any, they haven't been in our system, so they would be starting from scratch when it came to learning and looking at what our current system does. McFadden has a lot of knowledge and a lot of years with the city of Fort Morgan, and so I think they were able to cut those consulting hours down dramatically just because they're not starting from scratch, basically, with this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain action.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution to accept the bid from McFadden Consulting Group in the amount of $36,006 for the service to prepare a master plan for the city's natural gas distribution syst-
Second.
I have a resolution by Christine Casto, a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing for ordinance number 1181, an ordinance amending the appropriation of monies for the funds of the city of Fort Morgan for 2015. This is a public hearing. Keep public comments to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comments to three minutes unless speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allotted. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment to any that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it is necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. Mr. Brennan, has it been properly noticed?
Yes, your honor, a legal notice of this public hearing and the full text of the ordinance under consideration appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 9th.
Presentation of the ordinance, Mr. Wells.
So what this ordinance does is basically modify what council authorized for expenditures last year in the budget. Something we have to do in order to comply with state law to ensure that everything that was spent was approved by city council. We're not allowed, as staff, to spend a dime unless council says we can. So the expenditures are important, and that's essentially what this ordinance does, is it modifies those expenditures and allows us to make those expenses, and demonstrates to the auditors that it was all approved by city council. Throughout the year, you'll see where we'll come and say, we need to make this expenditure, we had this carryover item that wasn't anticipated to be in this year's budget. We do all that through a formal resolution, but the ultimate budget has to be adopted by an ordinance, and that's why we bring this to you at this time, just before we present the final audit, so that we're in 100% compliance with state law. Any questions?
I have none. Seeing no questions. Public comments. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none. Comments written or oral, Mr. Brennan?
None through my office, your honor.
Comments by the council? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your honor, I offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to close by Christine Casto and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council action, Mr. Myers.
This is an ordinance, so it's a legislative process. If council feels this is in the best interest of the city, then you should approve. If you don't, then you can deny. That would have its own complications, as previously discussed.
Thank you.
But you have the right to do that.
A little bit, I think. Very, to the point. I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution approving the second and final reading of ordinance number 1181, approving final adjustments to the 2015 budget and authorization to publish by title only. Second.
I have a resolution by Christine Casto, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
As fun as it, I think finance wouldn't have been fun if we wouldn't have done that.
Next, we have a presentation and possible action on the acceptance of the final 2015 financial audit. Ms. Kenny.
Good morning, mayor and council. And you all should have before you the final copy of the audit. And I do thank you for passing the budget, because this would be trash. Well, actually, we would have a budget violation, which I've never had, and I don't know that I really ever want to. And finance wouldn't be fun. But anyway, between the draft that you guys received last time at the golf course, the draft that you received there, and this, there's only minor changes, like maybe in commas or capitalizing some things. There were no major changes, there were no number changes in this, and so it's essentially the same thing as you had before, but it's a nice, pretty... same thing as you had before, but it's a nice, pretty copy, which we like. Does anybody have questions? So, what I need from you is a resolution to accept this.
One thing that I would, I would encourage council to do is, though, take time and review the audit. It does give you a perspective of where we're at financially, and we are in a good place financially. We've made some decisions, and council-supported decisions in this last year that have put us in a very good position financially in a lot of our departments. We've consolidated debt. If you look at our only outstanding obligations on page forty-one, as it relates to the enterprise funds, it's pretty impressive what we've been able to do. We've saved millions of dollars in consolidating water debt to prepare for the NIST project. The water fund is in great shape, which is quite a change in the last five years. There are considerable, another one, we paid off the sewer debt, which is always a good thing. So, it's fun to go through here and see how we're doing financially. So, if you're thinking about having some fun, you know, open up the audit and-
Yeah.
And review some financial statements.
One thing I would want to point out, since Jeff was pointing out on page seventeen, that we did have the restatement because of the change in accounting principle for pensions. We took a very large hit from it, but what was fortunate is that the amount of our increase in our net position exceeded it by a little bit. That isn't the case in a lot of the entities in the state. The school system had like a forty-five million dollar hit, and in some places, I think theirs, but I'm not positive, it actually created a negative net position, which is, me, is not a good thing, and you don't want to be there. So, we were very fortunate that we had enough money to cover the nine point six million they hit us with because of an accounting change. So, that's it.
And thank you to all of your staff. I know we said that last, last council meeting, but thank you to your staff for all the hard work they put in.
No kidding, and they each get their own copy as a bonus for it. And they like that.
Tell them to bring it in. We'll autograph it for them. I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the final 2015 financial audit. Second.
A resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next on the agenda is consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, your honor. This morning's consent agenda includes item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for May, and item B, approval of the minutes of the June seventh, 2016 city council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Anybody have any questions or comments, removals? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution approval of the dispersment of payroll for May and the approval of the minutes from the June seventh, 2016 city council regular meeting.
Second, sorry.
A resolution by Christine Casto, and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call, please.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Actually, our public comments for audience participation not on the agenda. Yes. Yes, if you would.
And sign in, or?
Just sign in.
I'm Noah Johnston. Do you need my address, too? Eight oh one Lake Street, Fort Morgan. Is there a reason, I just had, is there a reason Seventh Avenue does not have any stop signs on it? Is there like a logistical reasoning to this?
It goes along with, I think, the overall traffic flow plan.
Because I know it is super convenient, and I know like a lot of people like it. It's heavily used, but lately, I live on the corner of Seventh Avenue and Lake Street, and I have been noticing just people flying by there, going way too fast. And so, I was wondering if it was possible to have someone survey the traffic or do something along those lines to see if about maybe putting in at least one stop sign along Seventh. Of course, if not, I mean, I understand. It's been like that for a long time, I'm assuming, but I always see a lot of kids playing in the area on scooters, on their bikes, with balls and stuff, and I do. People are flying through there, especially on their trucks and their sports cars, so I just-
Jared, will you make note of that?
Typically, what we do on that is put up one of our radar trailers, and if anything, it's just kind of a notification as to what the, the speed limit sign, and it's thirty miles an hour through there. I know typically in residential, people think it should be lower, but by typical model traffic regulations and so on, it's, it's, stop sign correctly, it's, speed limit signs are up and so on and so forth. But, you know, we'll definitely see what we can do on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had public.
We get excited when we have public.
Is that all?
Well, don't overdo it. We want him to be public again in a few meetings or so.
Next, we have reports by officials and staff.
For your review in the packet?
That turned off. For your review in the packet, there is the monthly report on what's going on in the city, so if you have any questions, please let me know with that. A couple of other things that have come up, just to give you a heads up, is that we continue to work with citizens on West Street who are concerned that with the new middle school coming in, that there's going to be considerable, considerably more traffic. We've explained to them that there's a traffic study that has determined that all of the necessary traffic control signage is in place or will be in place by the time that the school district goes in, but we're going to take some other precautionary measures and measure traffic flows so that we can quantify how much that really is an impact in the area, make sure that we're addressing the issues if there are any. At this point, I don't think there's anything that's identified that there's any changed issue in the area, but I think there's some, some valid concern. So, we continue to work with people on that. We still work, are still working on the band shell. I know that some of you may have received phone calls wondering where, where we're at with working on some of the issues that the band shell committee had raised, and we're getting them done. You know, Friday, they put in new caulking and, and cleaned up around the edges, and I know that we're working with some contractors to try and schedule, come in and fix the pitting on the front of the facility. The pigeons, not a lot we can do with those. We'll do our best. We chase out the nests and do what we can. And then, other than that, from what we're hearing generally, is that the public's very happy with the facility. We had our get ready for Bob Stock meeting with the Bob Stock crew, and they go on and on and on about how the bands that come and play on that stage just love it. So, it's a very good amenity for our community. It brings a lot of people to downtown. It's great for our concert series in the park. I think we get a lot more participation in that, but we are working with those who still have a few concerns about the, the overall condition of the, the band shell. So, we'll keep working on that. Does anybody else have anything they needed to bring up? Brad?
Just wanted to give a quick update on South Main Street. I've gotten a lot of calls on that. I think that's some of the traffic, too. If you remember, that street's basically supposed to be closed, and I think people are now abiding by traffic control devices, which is good. We still have to change it up every week when they get into a habit of patterns, but we're currently, there is some delays. We're working on the design, looking at drainage, but the project, there isn't any issues at this point. Some people are wondering why they hadn't seen progress in a week, but we're moving forward this week to start putting in some of the drainage structures. It's not going to cover every flood, but it'll help a lot of those pockets of ponds, anyone that drives it and potholing. And then the other good news, I know they were planning on working on this probably till the end of October, because they're doing such a great job, and also working with Boone. As a subcontractor, right now, they're projecting, best case scenario, we'd be done by the end of July, which would then also help out, I think, on the traffic stuff on the schools by having that Main Street back up and open and running before that school opens. So, there's a lot going into that project, and appreciate all the funding we've received from you guys.
Could you clarify, only because I've heard from some people out, out in the public, when you say it's basically closed, South Main, could you explain what that means?
You can squeeze in and, no. So, we're constantly changing traffic control. In the upper portion by the railroad tracks, there's a lot of businesses there. So, we do our best to allow that local traffic. Really, when we say basic, I guess the best way to put it is, you can't come from Q and intend, we don't want you to use that as your main route all the way to Railroad Avenue. You want to have a different route, i.e. West Street, or Sherman, or those kind of things. And that's the biggest thing that's happening when we look at truck traffic, when Main is typically one of those that's used, and then it branches off over to Ensign. All that truck's been diverted either Barlow, or Sherman, or West Street, because they cannot go through. But we do allow it. The homeowners, there's a few of them, they're all, all county, but they know where to get in, and, and ECI is doing a great job, that they know those vehicles, they know those families, those kind of people. So, now when they see those cars, we've had a couple of people bring their RVs in to pull in, that we've just tried to keep that clear zone, but we've got to do it for public safety, too. If something happens, we can't just have everything torn up. So, the next stage, as we do storm drainage, that's what we're working on now, is again, we've got to get back up into that business area. It'll have some shifting and some inconveniences, but we're doing our best to let people kind of do what they need as necessary. The biggest part was that water line right down the middle, but we still got to put in curb and gutter, sidewalk everywhere, repave, and that's where that shifting will occur. So, we're trying to let people do their thing.
But if you live on Gateway, you take Sherman.
Yes. So, those are the primary that are barricaded, you know, the landmark. Landmark's totally blocked off, as well as Gateway, but there's another way to get to it. But it's those that are, I think, just trying to go straight through and are weaving through. We've still got to get the sanitation department through there. We don't want to disrupt the postal service, but once you create that little ten-foot opening, people find it. And so, our guys are constantly moving traffic control devices. So, once people get into this snake pattern, they'll switch it around to make it another disruption path, just to keep people from in that habit, so.
Jared, maybe that's another spot.
They're keeping an eye, it is.
Aren't fines doubled in construction areas?
They are.
For speeding.
Oh.
We have seen some of those tickets, and to reiterate what Brad's saying is, those homeowners and businesses that are within that closed area still need access to their property. Everybody else does not. So, that's kind of a general rule of thumb. If you're driving through there to access your property south of the closure, then you can get there another way. That's the way you should go is another way.
Use Burlington to South Lake, South Lake to Gateway. It works.
They're there. But when you don't see activity, people get in the habit that nothing's going on, and we're getting geared up again, so there'll be nice disruptions all over again. So, thanks.
Okay. Bits, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, your honor. There's only one bid currently open. It was just posted this morning. It's for the Akoma Avenue sidewalks project, and bids are accepted until July eleventh. Under meetings today through Friday, June twenty-first to twenty-fourth, the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference is being held in Vail on June twenty-third. The Museum Heritage Foundation will meet in the museum community room at four P M. June twenty-seventh, at four thirty P M., the planning commission will meet here at city hall. Monday, July fourth, will be Independence Day, and all city offices will be closed, and the next city council regular meeting will be July fifth at six P M. here at city hall.
Next on the agenda is an executive, an executive session for a conference with a city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under CRS section twenty-four dash six, four oh two, four B. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Litigation update. I'd entertain motion to go into executive session.
You have to say the whole thing.
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, and a second by Christine Casto. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourning to the executive session.